Okay, good evening. We're gonna open up the Planning Commission meeting for April 9th, 2019, and let's go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call.
First Commissioner Hernandez and Vice Chair Benjamin are not present this evening. Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
And Chair Holt.
Here.
Three are present.
Okay, so we have the approval of minutes from March 26, 2019. We can approve those because we have, everybody was here there, so any comments or motion on the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on then to our public comment period. This is the period for public comments on items not on the agenda. So I have a couple comments cards for items on the agenda, do not have any for items that aren't. I'm not seeing anybody jump up. We'll close the public comment period, and we can move into our first public hearing item. Coastal development permit for restrooms at Ocean View Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is a city project, actually, for improvements to Ocean View Park, an existing park within the Alsace-Lorraine neighborhood. The project includes replacement of the existing single stall restroom with a double stall restroom, relocating the footprint out from the middle of the park, off to the side by the picnic benches, and improvements to the existing paths to meet accessibility requirements, retaining wall replacement, the wall that you see along here, and new plantings, including an additional tree. Prior to requesting the permits, the project was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and location B, as indicated in your staff report, was preferred by the PRC. The permits requested now are the coastal development permit and architectural review. And, let's see, as far as the noticing goes, the site was posted for the coastal development permit, and we did post a notice in the newspaper, noticed the neighbors within 300 feet, and Public Works actually went above and beyond. They went around and talked to some folks, and the site was also posted as well. So some of the key things for the commission to consider: Conformance with the recently adopted Parks Master Plan, Conformance with the zoning code and local coastal land use plan, Design compatibility, and environmental review. As far as the Parks Master Plan, you may have noticed, so this is kind of the first item to implement the Parks Master Plan, and for the most part, all the recommendations that are in the Parks Master Plan are included in this project. One thing that's may... One of the recommendations that aren't included are possibly more bike racks, but Public Works is interested in doing that, you know, later on in the future. So the project is, you know, fairly simple in nature. It does conform to the setbacks that are required for the, within the R1 zoning district. And, you know, there are certain policies that apply to this project in relation to local recreation and maintaining active recreation facilities, which, that's exactly what this project does. So we're confident that it does conform to the zoning and local land use plan. Design compatibility, this slide includes, you know, for the most part, what the new restroom would look like minus the water fountains, which will be separated from the building itself. Let's see, environmental review. As far as SEQA goes, we're confident that this would fall into a categorical exemption. We've selected actually three that are noted in your staff report. And with that, if you have to take any clarifying questions, recommend taking public comments. And a representative from Public Works, our city engineer, is also here to answer any questions, so. Oh, and one last thing. We did provide you with a memorandum that includes a updated Table 1 that notes the setbacks, the pre, what was shown in your staff report reflected Option A, which is not preferable at this point. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions at this time?
I have some questions. So I did wonder, so you said that the Public Works had spoken with the neighbor, like, who would be nearest to the, to the north? Oh, sorry, did I get that right? Yeah, to the north, I think. Were there any, was there any feedback or comments?
Yes, and I think our city engineer, Maz, would like to answer that question. And just for clarification, it's the residents here, just to the north of the park.
Thank you, Scott. My name is Maz, I'm the city engineer with the City of Hafn Bay. So just to kind of comment a little bit on that, the resident on, just to the north on the screen here, was in attendance at the Parks and Recreation Commission Committee meeting, and there were, there was a good amount of conversation at that meeting. Some of the concerns were, some of the concerns he had was more related to nighttime use, and so one thing that we mentioned was that these would be on time locks. They would be automatically locked after a certain hour. They do have panic hardware on the inside, so it's not that anybody would get caught inside, but you would not be able to access it back after certain park hours. And the other, the other concern they had was with relation to the picnic benches and the seating in that area. And one thing we mentioned was with the relocation of the restroom, those seats would be relocated to a adjoining area that would be more suitable for it. And that seemed to be the extent of his concerns.
Okay, and I had, thank you, I had one other kind of, I don't know, it's more of a comment or question. It relates to, I think in one of the drawings, there was an indication of where a new tree would be planted. And I was just gonna point out that if you plant a tree, the kids will climb it, and so it shouldn't be over pavement or cement. And also, I think that the placement where, and I don't know where the picnic benches will be, like, it didn't show that, so maybe they'll be in a different location. But I will say that parents like to hang out at the picnic benches and watch their kids playing on the structures. And I think that, at least currently, where the tree was proposed, like, the new location, would be kind of like blocking that directly. It also looked like it was like right next to the path that would be, now be accessible, and that might not be great if roots start to buckle the path, or you get a lot of stuff dropping on the path. So maybe, I know that's, it's just a tree, but just rethinking perhaps the location to be a little more, just especially the kids, kids will definitely climb the tree.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you. Scott or Maz, what's the, the distance from the back of the new restroom structure to the fence along that north boundary of the park?
So it's roughly 10 feet.
And when you guys, when the neighbor spoke at Parks and Rec, the neighbor was okay with that?
The neighbor was okay with it after we explained some of the situations around the restroom itself. I know that one comment, one comment that the gentleman had was the proximity. And when we mentioned, originally, they thought it was gonna be very close to the fence line. And so we mentioned, we're looking at a minimum 10-foot buffer. He seemed to be appeased with that.
Can you say at this point what the configuration of the tables and the barbecue and the drinking fountain would be if, excuse me, if that structure goes in at this, at this point B, or is that still to be worked out?
It's still to be worked out, but we were looking at kind of the turf area that is between the proposed location and the pad that, where the current existing restroom is. Keeping in line with the site views of the play structure as well as the restrooms.
You mean that the table's on top of the turf?
We're, the tables, somewhere in that vicinity. Not exactly, we don't have it exactly locked down where it would be, but we would be looking at somewhere in that vicinity. We obviously have to keep it further away from the structure, but there would be some, could be some possible modifications in the turf area in that location.
But one of the benefits of the new location is supposed to be to free up the turf, right?
Correct.
Get rid of the existing structure.
Correct.
So putting the picnic tables on the turf would sort of defeat some of the, some of the benefits of that.
I, no, I understand your concerns. We can, we can take a closer look at that, and the intent is not to, is to continue keeping the turf area as open as possible. One nice thing about relocating the restroom is taking, taking it out of the center of this, of this park. And I know that there's been challenges with, you know, with accessibility to that location, and so we'll take that all into, all of that into consideration. I know there's also other areas that are closer to the corner of Alsace-Lorraine and Valdez that we may relocate some of those benches to. But we have, we don't have that as part of our site plan currently.
Like, when I visited here the other day, I couldn't tell, just with my eyeballs, if, and you probably can't see this from there, but the, if the restroom is at this rectangle that's labeled B, whether all the existing infrastructure, the tables and barbecue and water, would fit in the rest of this red infrastructure. It looked like it'd be at least fairly crowded.
It would be, there's, some of them, the water feature and some of those other pieces would be moved, would be relocated in that same vicinity. But yes, the benches would be something that we would look at relocating in a different location. And those are, they're, we're not looking at incorporating new ones. We're actually looking at reusing the ones that are existing. And so we have some flexibility in relocating them and moving them around, unlike the bathroom structure itself, where once that is placed, it's relatively permanent.
Yeah, and it would of course be nice if the, if the tables aren't, you know, very close to the doors of the restroom.
Absolutely. I think one of, one of the, one of the things that folks, the Mothers Club and some other folks have mentioned is having that visibility to the bathroom, but it's still within some, somewhat of a proximity, not, you're not right next to it.
Thank you.
So, so yeah, I'm just curious. So we're talking about the restroom and some other improvements. Are we going to see like a new site plan or something for this property? Or is it just in terms of to address some of those questions that Commissioner Reddick just raised about the location of the picnic tables and all that sort of stuff? Is that something that would be coming back to the Planning Commission, or?
We, the, the other amenities are relatively, are smaller in, just in size and nature. They're relatively movable as far as being able to work those, move them in different locations. The intent was not to bring it back to the Planning Commission, although, if that's something the commission would like, we certainly could bring that back once we move further into the construction documents.
Yeah.
Those details will be presented at that time in the construction level documents.
Yeah, the existing, the existing tables are, it's paved underneath where the existing tables are, correct? And so that would, as Commissioner Reddick raised the question about sort of trying to maximize the turf, but we, I would assume, would be paving a new pad for these new tables. Is that, is that, am I correct on that, or?
We, we were looking at different alternatives. It doesn't have to be paved. Some of, they could be on decomposed granite and other types of materials. But, but it's, we have not come up with a determination on the exact location or the surface treatment yet.
We also note that we would expect to bring this to the Parks and Rec Commission again as, as those details get nailed down, so.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? We're gonna open up for public comments. We can open it for public comments. I do not have any cards from the public on this item. If anybody wishes to speak, can you jump up now? Not seeing any. We're gonna close the public comment period, and then we can bring it back to the commission for discussion, discussing. If you have anything else you wanna?
I should have asked you when you were up there, Maz, what's the rough timing of this? Sorry.
It's okay, I need my steps. The rough timing is, we're looking, once we get the construction documents finalized, we were hoping to break ground by the late summer and have it right after school starts in that timeframe. It's really, it'll depend on the schedule, but we're looking at the fall, winter of constructing this. It's actually gonna be a prefabricated structure. So we'll do a lot of the site work in the fall, and by winter, we'd bring the new prefab structure and do the site amenities at that time.
Thank you.
Actually, just to follow up, so in the, what will be installed is the bathroom, and then will also the, the benches and other features that are part of the description, the report, be also installed at the same time, or are those for a later date?
The, the other features that are, so there's certain features that are gonna be displaced with the new location of the restroom. Those would be relocated to a place that would, that would be suitable for the location. I know the Parks Master Plan has a few other smaller pieces to it. Those are not part of the current project. So we'd be looking at reutilizing, we'd be looking at doing further improvements in the future.
Okay, is that, and what about that retaining wall?
That, that one is, that would be part of this particular project, only because it's, there's a necessity because of the failure of the wood, the pressure-treated wood that's out there currently.
As would the, the, making the path accessible?
Yes, so.
Those features are, would be.
Let me take, yeah, let me take it back. So the pad will be done, utilities, the electrical, water and sewer improvements would be done. The, the concrete pad for the structure would be, would be constructed, the relocation of the amenities, the restroom facility itself, and of course, the ADA path of travel to that facility.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any other comments. I would, I'd be curious to see a site plan or something like that as you get to whatever construction drawings. Not that we need to hold it up or anything like that, but I'd be interested to just see sort of where those other pieces land, and curious on the, what substrate they'd be put on if it's concrete or DG or something like that, so. With that, do either of you want to make a motion?
Have we ever done this before?
Go for it, your first one, it's a bathroom.
All right, I move that we approve a resolution. Do I, how do I do this?
Just move to the, the resolution as written. Yeah, you just say as written.
As written.
Ah, clever, clever. I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, we just approved a bathroom. Okay, moving on to, to our next item is the coastal development permit and architectural review for 2800 Champs-Élysées Boulevard. I'm sorry, I need, I need to speak right into it, I will, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is an item that the commission actually reviewed back in August of 2018 and was continued to a date uncertain. It's a, as mentioned, a new house at 2800 Champs-Élysées Boulevard. And since that time, the Staloski Gonzales Plan Development District was established within the land use plan, and which was one, one of the main items that the commission requested. And details about the planned development district, its policies, and why it was set, put forth, that's in your staff report, and so you recently reviewed a house right across the cul-de-sac, which we did have some discussion on, you know, sort of the background on the policies that were established for, for Staloski Gonzales. Let's see, the, the project includes the construction of a two-story residence totaling 4,655 square feet, two-car garage, guest house, landscape improvements, including stormwater management improvements. And the permits requested include a coastal development permit and architectural review. Here's an aerial photograph that shows the site, and sort of a triangular parcel, and, let's see, oops. As far as the noticing goes, the site was posted back in December of 2017 when the application was initially submitted. And the site was again posted last, last August, and then for this meeting as well. And then two notices have been posted in the Hafn Bay Review, and notices were sent out to all the neighbors within 300 feet and occupants within 100. And, let's see. So the project site itself is along the western side of the cul-de-sac that was recently constructed at the south end of Champs-Élysées Boulevard, here. So a few things for the commission to consider: Biological resource assessment, design compatibility, conformance with the zoning code, LCP, draining, drainage ingrading, subdivision improvements, and adequacy of the previously adopted SEQA document. So as far as the biological resource assessment, the original one was prepared in 2011 with the tentative parcel map and coastal development permit that was approved by the Planning Commission and attached to the initial study that was adopted with that project. More recently, an updated bio report was prepared, and the biological consultant concluded that the, within the updated report, that the mitigation measures associated with the ISMND was still appropriate today in relation to the new houses that are, the new house that's being proposed. And so, as you probably, you know, as we've discussed on other projects, the, kind of the key natural feature, or feature along the north side of the project is the Pullman drainage that runs along here. And the updated report concluded that the Pullman drainage may be considered sensitive habitat and, but is a man-made feature, an intermittent stream. And thus, certain buffer requirements are required per our code since it is determined to be an intermittent stream without riparian vegetation. So the design of the home reflects kind of the triangular nature of the subject property. And the project has been designed to conform to the development standards, adopted with a tentative parcel map, the planned unit development plan, established a maximum building footprint of 6,000 square feet. And then the, the tentative parcel map established the building envelopes. In plan view, the building articulation on the south side is fairly evident. You know, there's, there's a lot of back and forth. But on the north side, you'll notice that it's fairly flat. The commission will, will notice that the staff expressed some concern about the length of the north side, and as we understand it, there, there may be some neighbor concern about that with the, sort of the southern portion of the Miramar neighborhood. But this is something to consider with respect to our single-family residential design guidelines. As far as the, the front elevation, the, the front door in particular is very prominent, which is something that's encouraged within our design guidelines. Minor differences in siding and color and roof elements are included. As far as the rear elevation, this elevation faces the State Park and the Coastal Trail. Large windows are placed to capture views to the west and away from the neighboring properties to the north. Here, the north and south elevation side by side, and this gives you an idea of the, sort of the, the difference between the north elevation on the bottom and the south elevation on the top. And this slide indicates the, the eastern portion of the landscape plan. The site itself, let's see. And reflective of the biological report, the landscape plan shows the buffer requirements, the 30 feet, as you can see on the north here, from the center line of the Pullman drainage, where it's to be, remain in its natural state, and the split rail fence has been included along the north side at the buffer edge. And then this slide indicates the, uh, western side of the landscape plan and, um, let's see, uh, as you can see, we've, we have noted the, um, the further restriction area, uh, that's included in the settlement agreement that was attached to your staff report. The agreement specified an alignment, uh, for the sewer, uh, and did not allow the culvering of the, of the Pullman water course. Uh, it adds, uh, tree protection and replacement requirements and establishes the further restriction area, uh, which is not to be developed for, uh, 10 years. We are, uh, questioning whether or not this area is actually developable at all, given the, the narrowness of the lot and, um, so, and that's noted in your staff report as well. As far as preliminary grading and drainage, um, let's see, uh, you'll notice that, um, there's slightly more fill than off, off-haul for this project. Also, engineering, engineering staff have reviewed both the grading and drainage plans and no concerns were identified as far as, uh, drainage that, um, given the lot size, staff is comfortable that, um, uh, you know, the proposed improvements would conform to the current stormwater management, or stormwater management requirements. Now, as far as CEQA goes, uh, and, you know, as I mentioned, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration was adopted with the, the subdivision. And the, the proposed residence is located on one of the four lots associated with that subdivision. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and didn't identify any adverse effects on the environment and the, the project biologist, uh, was confident that the mitigation measures that were adopted, uh, are still appropriate today. And, uh, thus, we can, uh, confidently rely on the previously adopted MND. Now, as far as subdivision improvements, uh, you may have noticed that, um, yes, the cul-de-sac on, um, Champs-Élysées is completed, uh, along Pullman Avenue, that one is still under construction, uh, so the, the Commission will be seeing, uh, two other houses associated with this, uh, subdivision in the future. In summary, uh, the, the project conforms to the adopted development standards for the subdivision, uh, project conforms to coastal and visual resources section of our zoning ordinance. And, you know, as we mentioned, we do have a few, uh, design concerns. We are confident that the, uh, mitigation measures are appropriate for this project and, um, we did have a memorandum that we forwarded to you, uh, with a few questions and, um, concerns that we've, uh, provided some, uh, clarification on. Let's see. With that, we recommend that, um, you know, the Commission, uh, provide any clarifying questions, um, open the project up for public comment and, uh, planning commission discussion and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Also, the applicant is here and he, he'd like to give a, uh, he has a, a few, a quick presentation, uh, when, when appropriate.
Okay, um, would you like to hear the applicant's presentation first? Yeah, let's go ahead and do that now and then we'll return for any clarifying questions and then we can open up the public here.
Hello?
There you go.
Good evening. So this is my first speech ever, so I'm kind of nervous. Good evening, everyone, honorable planning commissioners and staffs and everyone here, um, residents. My name is Shirley and I am part of the Vidovic family. I live in Sunnyvale currently. Um, we purchased this lot because we want to build a home for our family to enjoy. Um, everybody in our family, we love the beach and we want the family to have a home, to stay by the beach and relax and have family gatherings. Cause, um, most of our family members are in the Bay Area, um, but we don't get to see each other very often, um, because we're all working and we're busy, we don't get together a lot, they're all working in different cities. We love Hafun Bay and this is the best location for our family to, um, build a home for, like a family home, um, so we're able to meet and have a getaway and we're able to enjoy and have some quality family time. So, um, that's our purpose and, um, we want to spend some quality family time together. And John, he is not good at decorating, so we found Chris Ridgeway and he's a very good architect and we asked him to design our home and we love his design. And he's also very environmentally sensitive and his design of our house is beautiful. So I hope you guys, um, can take a look at it. Yes, and that's my speech, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Shirley, um, my name is Chris Ridgeway, I'm the architect on the project. I live at 670 Poplar.
Chris, could you just make sure you speak right into the microphone there?
Yeah, I'm a little too tall.
You can, you can always pick it up, too.
Okay. How's that? Can you hear me?
We just need to make sure that the folks at home.
Yeah, I understand. I'm normally accused of having too loud of a voice, so this is kind of nice. So, all my buildings, I want to be functional for my clients and also beautiful to live in. And so as I kind of take you on a tour through this house, I'll kind of point out how I did that. The heart of the house is really the second floor, which you can see there that's kind of lit up in this night shot. And then Scott's going to turn over to the interior picture of that, which is great, and this is the inside of it here. So we wanted to ca, create a larger space for the family to gather and I've engineered this so there's no columns, uh, in the space and so it's all wide open. Obviously, we have, uh, really beautiful views here that go from the mountains to the sea and we wanted to have large windows and the windows that face the south, uh, are the largest windows in the prop, in the property and also to the west. The windows are also important to bring light deep into the space, um, and also it's good to have a solar passive heating from the sun coming in on that stone floor that's there, so, um, it's, it's well situated there. Of course, we're concerned about the neighbors and their privacy, uh, so on the opposite side of the house, as the north side, we've limited the windows to be very small and if you want, we can go over the exterior elevations, but I'll, I'll wait if you ask for them. And so we've only put in windows for ventilation and a little bit of light and also this gives us privacy for the neighbors and the neighbors' privacy from us. So, in this overall area, I wanted to create this kind of long, uh, strong columns and this high ceiling and a great place to gather and that's how I'm trying to bring it together. And then I wanted the, the inside to really let, relate the outsides, the glass corner of the window kind of dissolves the boundary between the inside and the outside. So if Scott can turn to the porch perspective, that would be great. Um, let's see, what else you've got? That's, keep on, there you go, okay. Obviously, the, uh, the porch gives us shelter, um, uh, for the people coming to knock on the door, but it's also nice, old-fashioned houses used to have porches that people could sit on and have something that faces the, the front of the street rather than just a big, uh, large garage door. It also is a device to set that main house further away from the street and so, uh, the house doesn't loom over the street. I also kind of liked, uh, designing where you kind of look through the porch on the left-hand side and you kind of see through to the landscape even in the view beyond and so we've kind of created that diagonal view through it that kind of links the house to the, uh, landscape. Once again, we've kind of used the stone, uh, here and we've put it in these concrete, these stone pedestals and so we've got a kind of a rhythm of how the house steps down from, uh, the second story to the porch to the pedestals. So I'm going to go on to the, the courtyard, so Scott, if you could go ahead and, uh, change back to the very first perspective you had. I think you're doing great, one more. Yeah, okay. So there's several things I wanted to do on the courtyard. In Hafun Bay, I find if you can get into the sun and out of the wind, you could be comfortable, so that, uh, courtyard faces south, so it picks up the sun all day and then the winds that come in from, uh, in the fall and the spring come in from the northwest and so the house actually blocks, uh, the wind and creates a comfortable environment. Um, Paramount was actually also getting the privacy between, between the neighbors and us one more time, so there's, uh, the, the neighbors can't see anybody on that patio on the outside. So I'm going to talk about the size of the lot and the house. The, the lot's very large, it's 31,000 square feet, which is about six times larger than most lots. The house is, uh, 3,758 square feet, but then when you add the guest house and the garage, then it equals the 4,655 square feet that you see, uh, in the report. The way, uh, realtors, most people talk about their house is they talk about the house size, which is 3,758 square feet. As I look at how the planning department evaluates this, we take a look at the floor area and the site coverage, uh, the floor area is, um, 14% of the site. Most places in Hafun Bay are zoned to be 50% of the, of the site. So we're about a quarter, um, of the size that we could be under that evaluation, um, as you look at what other the neighbors are. Also, the lot coverage, we're at 13% and usually 30% is allowable. So we're about a quarter there also. So, um, I've had people, when they want to do large houses and small properties, people complain, well, buy a bigger property and my client certainly did build a, uh, buy a bigger property and it's reflected, um, not only the design of the house, but let's go, how the house affects the neighbors. On the north property line, the neighbors' house, Joe and Carol Farrell, are five feet away from the property line and we're 30 feet away from the property line. And so there's a 35-foot buffer between the two houses, which is much more than typically in a house you'd have 10 feet away from each other. And 30 feet of it we're providing here because of the, the water course that goes along that ditch area. Uh, most of the houses, um, along that side is long, but we went from two stories to one story to break it up. And certainly, we could have done a shorter house, but then it would much more, but it would be two stories. And what we really wanted to do was open up the, the view from the neighbors', Joe and Carol Farrell's house, to go look over the top of it. In fact, when I first started design, I, I notified by mail the people in the area and Joe and Carol Farrell were the ones that called me back on this one. And so I met with them and we, uh, listened to what they wanted and I actually pulled the garage on the west side back quite a few feet and then I had a gable roof on it and I changed it to a hip roof. And so that allowed them a more of a, a view that's kind of went out to the western side. So it's nice to work with a client, they can hoard nice materials, uh, starting from the roof down, we're using fire clay shingles, uh, copper gutters, uh, all the stone is real, all the wood is real. And there's solar panels hidden on the upper flat part of the roof there, so they won't be seen. So often, they're kind of put on as an afterthought and dominate the roof line, so we've hidden the solar panels away. We've also tried to integrate the house into the landscape and you can see on this picture here how outside the master bedroom, there's a, a privacy wall and then it steps down to another wall here. And so the, the roof kind of cascades down to the, to the wall and then to the planters and the same thing with the pedestals that we put in the front of the house. As far as the landscaping, um, we've, uh, used drought-resistant plants and actually I took a survey of, of the, of the flowers that grow wild along the coastal trail and bought a book that's, uh, published down at the parks and we picked most of the plants to be, uh, ones that grow by seed naturally in this area. So in summary, um, you know, we just, I try to do a design that respects the neighbors and has a good setback from them, has a well-suited lot and, uh, fits in with it. So thank you very much, I'm sure you'll have more questions and I'll gladly answer those. Thank you so much.
Do we have any, uh, questions of the applicant at this time? We'll have, uh, if you're interested in, in providing public comments, if you could fill out a green card and get those over to me, you can. Do you have any questions of the applicant, the architect at this time? Okay, um, so I, um, so I just wanted to clarify, I heard, um, uh, the, the purposes for building the home, um, so this would not be owner occ, this wouldn't be occupied full-time? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, it's not occupied full-time.
Is there any estimate of how often it would be occupied?
I would say that it would often be occupied on the weekends, uh, and, uh, so.
Okay.
It's, it's hard for me to.
Sure, I understand.
I'm just trying to be.
I understand. Okay, um, and, um, I had another question, that's not popping in my head at this time. Steve, do you have any questions of the applicant or? Okay, um, okay, thank you very much, we'll.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We have, uh, questions for staff, clarifying questions for staff? Go for it, Steve.
Scott, um, if I understood you correctly, you said that the, the staff had some concerns about the length of the, of the north side of the house, but that it was, uh, in compliance with the, with the policies that are in place for that subdivision. Is that accurate?
Well, so, so we did, um, work with, uh, Chris Ridgeway, the architect on, um, you know, from initial submittal, it was, um, you know, we had some concerns in, uh, in our initial incompleteness letter about the, the flatness of the north elevation and, uh, some, some improvement was made, uh, as you can see on this slide, the, um, you know, breaking up with the, uh, materials and colors. We, you know, there is an element, you know, it's slightly subjective on whether or not, you know, a house is in compliance with the design guidelines, uh, so that's, that is one thing that the Commission will need to evaluate tonight, um, when reviewing this project, so.
I'm going to elaborate for just a minute to make sure we directly answer your question because we've been studying the design guidelines today and I think that's where our staff has been focused, um, with regards, uh, specifically to the planned unit of development standards that were, um, included as a part of the Staloski Gonzales Plan Development, um, that was added to the land use plan, as well as the, uh, tentative map, which was also a policy, um, referenced in the land use plan. Yes, the, the project conforms to the standards that are in those, uh, two documents in terms of, um, the footprint, setbacks, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I took the point that, uh, the architect was making about the, the trade-off between the length of the, versus two stories and one story, so that's something, uh, something to consider.
Sure, any questions? Microphone.
So I do have one question, um, in terms of the, uh, the sizes, that, so the property, it sounds like it's 31,000 or 31,700 almost, uh, square feet. Is that the total parcel that includes those restricted, the areas that are marked out for restriction area, um, like, that are the buffer, the 30-foot buffer, as well as the part to the west? Or is that just the, the parcel with, um, the footprint kind of within the, um, area that's like landscaped, for instance?
So the 31,699 square feet includes the further restrict, restriction area, uh, the buffer, uh, any, any area within the parcel lines, so.
And then, um, is the, so my understanding is that the footprint of the, um, the building is the 4,655. Does, what is the other areas that are kind of the, the patio, um, with the pavers and then it also, including the, the driveway? Kind of the developed aspects that are, um, in there?
So as far as the hard surface goes, I would only be able to give an, an estimate at this point. Yeah, that might be a, a great question for the architect, you might be, uh, better prepared to, to answer that question. He might be better prepared to, to answer that question, so.
I, I suggest we come back to that after your public forum, and we'll see if we can get you something more specific.
Great. Good suggestion. Okay. I would, I would just like to note for the benefit of the commission and the public and others, this project did come to us before, and questions about the design did start to come up, but we did not get into the design. So that, we specifically did not ask a lot of those questions and get into that because the commission and the other two commissioners who aren't here tonight, who were a part of that conversation, wanted to just address the, the PUD issues at that time. So, so I just wanted to make that clear, that, that we have not, we have not necessarily looked at or asked these questions on design before. So I wanted to ask the question, we don't, the city doesn't have any restriction on occupancy, owner occupancy, or that sort of thing, correct?
That's correct. Only with accessory dwelling units.
Is it, is it fair to say that some of our draft general plan or LCP guidelines encourage that?
Encourage the development of accessory dwelling units? Absolutely.
Well, that, yeah, that answers my next question.
I think you're referring to the preservation of housing for housing stock.
Yes.
There's some policies in the draft land use plan that address that, including exploration of things like empty house taxes and that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you. And so the staff department mentions that this home is larger than a lot of the other homes within the neighborhood. Do we know the sizes of the other homes in the neighborhood?
So to my knowledge, the, there is a home that's on Alameda that's a little further to the north, sort of in the middle of the Miramar neighborhood, that's roughly in the same, you know, same realm, square footage-wise. But generally speaking, the houses that are just to the north are smaller because of the smaller lot size.
Understood. Okay. Great. Thank you. And then the conditions of approval, I just want to make sure we're clear on this, is for the restricted area, there is a comment about that was to remain restricted for ten years, but staff's recommendation is that that would be permanently deed-restricted?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. If there's no other clarifying questions at this time, I do have a number of cards for the public, public comment period, so we'll open that up. My, the first one here is Christopher DeVich. All right.
Am I talking loud enough? Good.
I can hear you.
Well, I was going to address the drainage situation. It seems like there's adequate grading, but I would say there's inadequate drainage, at least drainage as it affects the neighborhood. I'm going to present an exhibit. I don't know who wants to start, but... Someday, I'm going to send that to the Smithsonian Institute because it's been around for about sixteen years now. I suggest that you really need to visit this property on a day when there's a downpour. We live slightly northwest of the property, and that condition happened in December of twenty, two thousand and three. It's also happened eight or nine or ten times since then. We have continually tried to solve the problem, the issue of the ditch, to no avail. An owner very close to this property was going to build their property, suggested they wanted to build about seven years ago. The city suggested you have to construct a major drainage system to deal with the ditch before you build your house. That owner decided not to do that, and the house has not been built. I suggest this is an excellent opportunity to deal with this ditch once and all, once and for all. Let's put a pipe in that ditch, cover it up with dirt, and I don't have to come to these city council meetings anymore. Because that's going to continue to happen. That, like I said, that's happened eight or ten times since we moved into our house sixteen years ago. And Joe Farrell will make a presentation later on, and he will substantiate that the land has been raised considerably, which means it's going to be all the more opportunity for the property to drain improperly into the ditch and to flood. So I only use two minutes. Good for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Susan Quagley. Apologies if I'm butchering your name.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking my comment. We're new to the neighborhood. As you heard, I'm Susan Quaglietti. We moved about a year and a half into the neighborhood, and I'm with my partner, husband, Vic Folecker, and he'll be making a comment as well. We moved to Halfing Bay because we enjoy the nature-like feel to the area where we were living in Menlo Park before. The houses and the landscape, as well as the values, all seem aligned and harmonious. So new building, at least in our expectation, we really look forward to that, and we anticipate that the new residents that are going to be building, because we have other developments that are going to be going on around our house, will be blending into these principles that I just mentioned, as well as respecting that individuals have preferences with their But in this case, size does matter. The proposed house is really, really long, and it looks like a parking garage. And I hate to be so specific, but I need to be graphic because I'm going to be living in this neighborhood, looking at this every single day. It's twice the size of all the other houses on average in the neighborhood. But this is the most striking fact about this house, is that it's over a half a football field long. It's over a half a football, football field long. And this seems, this seems excessive in all the aspects that I just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. See, the next, next speaker card I have is for Joe Farrell.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay. So our, our home is situated...
If you could speak right down into the microphone there, go ahead, lift it up.
How about that? Is that better?
That works.
Okay. Our, our home is situated right next door to the Vitovich home. And I think that is, Chris, is that right? It's Vitovich?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think, is this the same person that's doing the RV park, proposing the RV park to? Okay. I, I just wonder, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah. He's correct. Correct.
Anyway, so we're, Chris has been wonderful to work with.
This, it's not back and forth, we'll just take the public comment.
But when we, when we actually saw the, the story polls come up this time, it concerned the, the whole neighborhood, and so we got some aerial photos, so we'll tell a little bit story. Can you go to the next slide? In a, and I, no one can really see that, it's too small from here, so I, I have it right here. What we, the neighborhood is concerned about is that the structure isn't compatible with the rest of the neighborhood and the nearby structures. The house is too long on the north side. Susan had said it's a half a football field. Sorry. Susan has said it's a half a football field. Yeah, thank you. That's about right. When you, when you're living next to it, what we see is a hundred and fifty feet of a continuous wall. It's, it's frightening when you look at it with a story pole. There was also significant soil that was added, and you'll see in the picture, that, and what that means... Yeah. Sorry. What, what that means is we're going to have a, the, the water is going to drain right into our house, as well as into the creek, as well as the nearby neighbors and the soil that's been built up. And then the, the last part is, the biggest thing that we're concerned about is the size and the length of where the garage is, et cetera. That also means that that area won't be able to absorb water anymore. And it's a very poor drainage area, and this really does impact our neighborhood. Oh. Can you go to the next slide? Thank you. So this is what the, this is, with the story polls, what it looks like. You can take a look at the neighborhood and see, these are small homes, they're owner-occupied. The lots are fifty to seventy-five feet by a hundred feet. Can you go to the next slide, please? However, when you get close, you can really see the scale of this thing, and it's just, it's out of proportion with the rest of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. This is also just another picture. Our house is, it's up, it's five feet up off the ground, so it appears to be high, or appears to be large. Our house is dwarfed by this. And then this is, this is a view from Alameda, and you can be able to see with the white line, it's a hundred and fifty feet. I mean, and it's more than twice as large, twice as long as any other house. Next, please. It's just another picture. I think this is, this is one that really speaks a lot. And whether this is a PUD in its own neighborhood, by virtue of the fact that they came across and opened up these streets, these people are part of our neighborhood now. And we all, we all work together, play together, have fun together. This is part of the neighborhood. So we're just asking that we get a little bit, that we have the, a little bit to play with in terms of the design itself. Next, please. That's, that will be the view from, from our home right here. So it's, I think you can see that it is really going to, it's, it's pretty long. Next. So the areas that we would suggest approving in with is make it more like, if possible, make some modifications to make it more like a beautiful home on Correus and Washington Avenue. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Thank you.
We're going to need to wrap it up, too. We're going to need to wrap it up, too. Time's up there.
Okay. Thanks. Next, please. And this was the one that we were talking about. If we could, if we could see something like this that is a smaller footprint, it would really be helpful. So if the garage got moved, if the footprint was shrunk, I think you'd get a lot of support from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment is Vic Foleck?
My wife said it.
Okay. His wife, his wife said it all, so. Michelle, you're good as well. Okay. David Westendorf.
Hello, I'm David Westendorf. I, along with my wife, Michelle, live about four doors away from this proposed development. We thank you for offering the opportunity to give public commentary, and I think I'd speak on behalf of both my family, as well as many other members of, of our neighborhood in opposition to the flood principle, of which we experienced flooding in our backyard during extreme times of intense rain. And then, secondly, that north facade, given the proportion of that to the other properties, is an aberration, and it seems to be visually unwelcome, the renditions that we've seen and all of the size approximations relative to, to the other dwellings. It just does not seem appropriate. While I don't offer anything new in terms of perspective, I do want to lend some volume and support to some of the other comments that have been made, and I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the end of the cards that I have here. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Bogart, go for it.
I was interested, in some of the comments, there were about soil already, the, the site being raised in elevation. Has, is that something that's been, that's happened already? Is the, the staff aware of anything like that?
No, we're, we're not aware of any grading that's taken place on the site, so.
Well?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Reddick?
I think mastering the microphones is the hardest part of this process. Scott, I think I recall that the, in terms of the grading on that lot, the, the proposal would be for a net import of, of soil as that, as that project goes forward. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
It would be interesting to know what the circumstances are if indeed the, the lot has been built up in recent times already.
So roughly fifteen cubic yards that would, that would be imported, so.
And presumably, that would be under the, the footprint of the, of the house and, and not the landscaped areas.
Yes, that's correct, so.
Okay. Go for it. So I, I was going to ask, I was curious about some of the questions around, around flooding and drainage and that sort of thing. We heard about some of the existing conditions regarding flooding there, and, and the suggestion that the Pullman water course be put into a culvert or something along those lines. Is there, are you aware of sort of broader flooding areas within the neighborhood, or...
So going back in time, when the tentative parcel map was reviewed back in 2011, that was part of the project, was to, to install a culvert the entire way along the, you know, the north property line there, from the highway all the way to the state park. That was removed from the project before it was actually approved. And then since then, there is language in the settlement agreement that also removes any sort of culvert, culvert installation for the Pullman drainage, so.
Can you confirm that there's been sort of a history of flooding problems since then?
Yes, from time to time, there, we, staff is aware of, you know, some flooding that's taken place in, you know, folks that I've talked to, it's, it seems to be, for the most part, related to some clogging of the, the current culvert that's there. Oz, our city engineer, may be able to shed some, some additional light on that, so.
Good evening. Just wanted to kind of clarify a little bit about that. So I, I know that a lot of our water courses have, they do have quite a bit of flow that can come through, especially after a lot of rain events. It's, you know, a year like this, we've had a lot of saturated soil conditions. And so at this point, even a minor rain event would, could cause some flooding, just because of the groundwater table is a little bit higher. And just wanted to also note that, you know, not just in the Miramar area, but anywhere where we have these types of conditions, all of our water courses are subject to the Coastal Commission oversight, and we've had, we've had challenges in, in getting culverts in place in other, in other areas within the city of Halfing Bay as well.
Right.
So, so actually, to clarify, I just want to make clear that the agreement states that there's, that there cannot be a culvert installed there? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. So, so I, I guess I would point out, even if this is in, you know, in compliance and all, it's putting another constraint on this water course in terms of how you deal with, develop a, a workable solution for storm, storm drainage through this area. Because, I mean, even, I hear what you're saying, that there's, it gets clogged, you know, and it needs maintenance. But the frequency that it sounds like that this happens makes me think that it's not, it doesn't have the right capacity as is. And then I know that further down ditch or whatever water course there's, you know, towards the state parks, they are having, you know, a culvert failure plus erosion issues that are causing them problems. And then if you look in the, in this, I mean, I know it's from 2011, but the hydrology report suggested that the culverts that are underneath Cal, the, underneath Highway One are also undersized, and... undersized, and that's actually what's constraining water from reaching the west side of the, of the highway there. So, if those are upgraded to a larger capacity, then you actually have more water coming across. So, you have a whole set of, of problems, and you already have constraints, like the sewer lines running through there, but that might be doable. This project, I, I totally agree that it's, you know, the, the definition of riparian vegetation in the LCP is, it has to be more than fifty percent of riparian species. So, that, this, there's no vegetation that meets that definition. Therefore, the max boundary, or excuse me, buffer is the thirty foot. So you have thirty feet, and you actually, you have like basically a thirty-five foot distance between the houses, with a, you know, a hu, and it's a very long distance, you know, a hundred and fifty feet, that it's now, that's a further constraint, that's not flexible. And so I just, regardless of whether it complies, it's, it's making life very hard down the road to deal, even harder to deal with this. I mean, we heard last week from, or two weeks ago, I guess it was, from Ann Riley, about ideas of how to make water courses without culverting, you know, that could be more natural, and have vegetation, and, you know, et cetera, but it, you can do them in very narrow spaces. It's certainly better to have more space to deal with it, and it sounds like this one's a very flashy type of water course, so it gets big, you know, you know, big slug of water and stuff, and that has to be able to handle it. And what is kind of nuisance flooding right now could actually be damaging flooding, or happening so regularly, that it's blocking off access to houses, or causing, you know, water damage and such. So, I, I'm very concerned about that, because I do think that, you know, regardless, there's a lot of constraints, and we're adding one more constraint with the, with, with this. And so, and it is, it's kind of as close as it can be to the water course, which makes it the, even more of a constraint. So, that, I just wanted to raise that as a concern and question. And if you have any comments about the capacity, or like, or a bigger picture plan for the Pullman, definitely interested to hear.
I just wanted to just kind of mention a little bit about one of the other projects that we've been, that the city's been working on, is the Highway One North Project, and the Highway One South Project, actually. So, that's definitely one of the concerns that we have, and unfortunately, the impacts are always seen downstream, but really, the work that needs to be taken place is upstream. And so, some, some of the policies that the city is working on and moving forward would be things like green infrastructure, where we have stormwater retention areas upstream of some of these water courses. I'm just kind of speaking in, in generality here, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of different improvements and changes in policy that we are currently working on to make, that would help us in the future. And some of that has to do with how we manage our stormwater upstream before we even get to this point. Your, your point about increasing the culvert under the, on their Highway One, absolutely. I mean, that, that's actually, that's actually protecting the neighborhood south. If we increase that without doing any other mitigation, it would create an adverse impact downstream, and that's something that, that's exactly why we're not proposing that for the Highway One North Project, for example.
So we're kind of on a drainage theme here. Sorry, the public comment period is closed for now, so if, perhaps if we get to a point we can make a motion to reopen that, or what. But, but we're focused in on drainage right now, so I'm sure we have other comments on design and everything else, but anything else you want to comment on?
Well, as, as far as drainage goes, and I don't, I don't know if it's realistic to ask this of staff, but is there any vetting that has, that tries to take place as to whether the, the, the drainage for a project like this, given the special circumstances of the Pullman water course, is adequate?
Since we have the luxury of having our city engineer here, I may defer to him on, on this one, since we did route the plans to engineering for review, so.
I'm gonna repeat the question, and I, that's okay, we, we understand how popular city engineers are around here, so. Specifically, we'd like to share with the audience, and of course, our planning commission, how we approach projects that come to the commission that are in certain circumstances. This is something that we, we've discussed with the commission in the past. All projects that go to the planning commission have at least a preliminary grading and drainage plan. Projects that are on water courses, slopes, or otherwise pretty heavily impact because they are substantially impervious surfaces, we go a little deeper on that and ask our, our applicant to provide more detail about their grading and drainage system, and ask the city engineer to take a look at it at this point in the planning process, which was done for this project.
Okay.
I'm trying to work on that, too, sorry about that. So yeah, as Joe mentioned, I did, we did take a quick peek at the planning submittal, and the information from previous applications on this app, on this location. We, we feel confident that the site, as being proposed, would not have an adverse impact in the, in this particular location, although we still are going to look at the building plan set, once that comes forward with additional hydraulic calculations, specific to what this, what's being proposed today.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments related to water?
One of the reasons, the reason I was asking about earlier, about the size of the, impervious areas, is because I realized that the, there's the building footprint, you know, which, which I granted is not large compared to the size of the lot, but is a large area, as well as the, but there's a very long, large driveway. And so it's the, and I realized that the sighting of the driveway was, it sounds like was to kind of put it in a spot where it wasn't going to be facing the, the street, or very visible, very obvious, which is, complies with the design guidelines, but it's a, that's a pretty long driveway of asphalt. And so, that was, I was thinking about it from terms of minimizing, trying to minimize the impervious surface with the, with the project. I do think that that's, that's something that I would strongly encourage, or I'd like to see, like, some sort of, if it's, they could change the surface so that it's not impervious, or put one of those grass median strips down there, or something, you know, like vegetated median strips down the middle, something to break it up, so you're reducing the impervious surface. And I think that's my last, like.
Okay. Well, okay, the other, the other comments I heard.
Okay, hopefully, I don't have to repeat too much of that. So, as I look at the site plan, the, the ditch or the culvert isn't on this property, it's on the adjacent property, so it's, we can't go onto an adjacent property and say that we're going to enlarge a culvert, or change it, or do anything. If you look at, it's on the, it's on the architectural plans, and it does show that where the water course is, and where the, where the drainage is, and it actually, I believe, actually, you might have to verify this, goes underneath a couple houses there. So, we can't go into underneath someone else's house and start doing earthwork. We will hire a civil engineer when we get past this stage. It's hard to do all the civil engineering for, if you don't know if the site plan's gonna change at all or not. And I suggest that we work with staff and the neighbors to take a look at what we can do to encourage the drainage, but on the other hand, we can't change what's already there on the neighbor's property. I do have more things that might address some of the questions that, that the audience raised, but I think I'll just kind of wait and see what you want me to talk about, and then I'll go ahead and talk more about that. Thank you for lending.
Thank you. So the other item that I heard from the audience was a lot of concern about the design. I'll just note, staff also noted some concern about the design and, and its compatibility with the residential design guidelines. I think the pictures were helpful, to sort of understand the massing there, and I think, I share a lot of the concerns about the, the compatibility of this home with the surrounding neighborhood, both in size of the home, but also in the, the placement and the massing of that north side there. So, so I certainly would like to see. I know in, in past situations where we've had these types of conversations, there has been fairly extensive back and forth and dialogue with the neighborhood, with the community. With Jenna Lane, there was, there was, I think, a good amount of that, that ultimately ended up in a project that we were able to approve, that the neighbors and the community largely supported. So it was a, it was a really good process, so, so it doesn't sound like we're quite there yet on this one. I also have just some, some general concerns about, as I mentioned earlier, just the occupancy, and, and this had come up previously as well on the Jenna Lane, just some of the other potential uses of the home, when it's not being used for residential purposes, though. In that particular case, it was for Airbnb rentals, but I think certainly, any potential for, you know, I mean, you can imagine corporations wanting to rent it for a weekend retreat, or, or any number of different potential uses there. So I think that's something that, that I think we need to consider in terms of how we address that. And, and again, I don't necessarily think that we're, that we're there yet. And also just, I have to say, just at the core, it feels like this home kind of flies in the face of a lot of the things that our community's been trying to do, and that's really trying to provide housing for the people who live in our community, trying to expand accessory dwelling units, and, and affordable housing options, trying to, trying to provide housing that, like I say, serves our community, fits in with our community, reflects our community. And so while a lot of our, I think, our existing residential design guidelines and other policies, you know, there's some compatibility here, there. Just having been involved in the general plan update, and, and a number of other processes where we've talked about these things, this seems entirely incompatible with everything that we've discussed throughout those processes, so. So with that, those are my broad design comments. I will say, I'm missing our former colleague, John Evans, here on the, on the commission, who had a really good, really good architecture and design perspective, and, but I think some of the comments that have been raised by staff and others about sort of breaking up the, the structure into perhaps two different structures, or something along those lines, I think those are some options that I would like to suggest that we consider.
Well, I, I share many of the concerns that Chair Holt has just, has just walked us through. I, and this, I suppose I should have added, I share many of the concerns you've mentioned about design compatibility, and I maybe should have saved this, or, or made this, this next comment during the drainage part, but I, I know, I'm aware anecdotally of issues with the, with the Pullman water course. I was, I was told by one of our ex-mayors of almost being swept into the culvert and drowned on an evening when he was, he and the city staff people were desperately trying to, to put, yeah, put sandbags out there to stop the flooding. But, we're also probably, or very most likely, at the start of a process to, to build four new houses right along there, with the attendant impermeable surfaces. So I, I really am scratching my head and wondering if we know what we're doing in, in that regard.
Yeah, I, I too share a lot of those concerns about the, the design compatibility. I think, based on kind of my areas of expertise, I'm more focused probably on some of the drainage concerns, because I, I can see where, while I see that it's not the, that this project, that the owner can, has control over the Pullman water course, what I see is coming down the road, we're, we're kind of boxing ourselves in, in terms of what we can do to address the issues that are happening for localized flooding in that neighborhood. And so, this is yet another constraint, and I'm very concerned about that. I would also say, so I, I definitely share what, you know, my colleagues have had to say. Also, I would point out that, while, one other aspect that we haven't talked about at all, but I think would be helpful to share some feedback on, or, you know, comments that I had, was actually around some of the landscaping. While I, I definitely appreciated that, you know, there was a, you know, no lawn, for instance, I think that's great, to not have a lawn, if you don't, you're not gonna use it and such, but I would point out that there were, there was, you know, an effort to plant, for instance, in native plants on the east, on the west side, but then as soon as it comes to the, the part, portion to the south of the, the property, the building structures, it's all, they're not, they're, they're not native plants, and I think that's a missed opportunity to continue native plantings. There's a lot of great plants that could be really good, you know, for that south side, basically south of the entire driveway. Things like coffee berry and zinotis, and there's even a native rhododendron that could be planted. So just some more attention to some of that, the landscaping and thinking about that, also on the north side, again, kind of where the, near the, where the water course runs on the north side, again, thinking about plants that are native and require, or, or at least require less water. I think a lot of those along that entire north side of the, of the building would require regular watering, there's probably ways to avoid that. So just thinking about those types of things as well, because it is bordering on an area that's open space ag, you know, and so it's a nice opportunity to, I know there's a lot of non-natives there right now, but if you're going to have, have, you know, start putting landscaping, thinking about how you can contribute to good habitat for birds and insects, especially like butterflies, et cetera. So, I think there's a lot of, there's perhaps, there's some good things about landscaping, but there are also some missed opportunities, perhaps. I also would highly recommend against using a couple of the species that were in your list, because they are invasive, and so I, I think those might be noted by staff already, so just something to consider. And there was only a couple, but just important not to plant more non-natives that are invasive. So, those are just some things I wanted to raise, because I think that they also should, kind of in thinking through what this could look like, be part of the process as well.
So, and I will just add, just in general, I, I think it, I think it sounds like we're moving towards potentially a, a continuance or something here, and I would, I would certainly, I mean, I've expressed my concerns, but I would also support that, just in that, I would like to hear from our other colleagues who aren't here tonight, on this, on this project, so, so I think, I think that's important. So, do you have anything else you want to add, Commissioner Reddick? Okay, so staff, if we were to continue, should we take a break and discuss that? Okay.
We'd like to talk to our applicant for a couple minutes, just.
Go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
[inaudible]
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 Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
[inaudible]
Okay.
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 will cause another problem. So, I really would like the council to kind of take a look at, you know, what they, what they think they want me to do. We don't want to solve one problem and cause three more. And I would note that, that we did break up the garage from the house with a breezeway. We did vary the materials along there. And of course, the house is long. We planted a tree at, at the street. My, my hope was that the house would look basically like the other houses, somewhat in size, from the street. Because until you go around the driveway, then you can't see the length of the house there. And then, maybe we could plant more, we planted a tree, we can't plant anything in the, in the buffer zone, but we could plant a tree in, in that area that would, that would grow and shield some of the, the view of the house from the side. Obviously, where the street is where it's most seen and most affected by the neighborhood. And so, anyhow, those are kind of my thoughts. I'd like to have just a little more feedback from you, and maybe I could-
Yes.
-give you some feedback whether I think those things are doable.
Okay. I guess my, my initial reaction on the one thought, in terms of the, the reducing the length and making it two-story and some of the concerns that are there, is that there is always the option of making it a smaller house. So, that's something that, that, you know, could be, could be on the table. And certainly, for, for the use that we had proposed for, that we had heard was proposed for it, I think that would be a reasonable consideration. And so, some of my, my other thoughts, just in terms of, I do think it's important that, that work with, work with the neighborhood and, and try to find, you know, I heard, I heard some comments earlier that seemed fairly reasonable and that there was a potential design there that was workable and that certainly people respect the, you know, the, the applicant's right to use their property. So, I think-
Well, we did, by mail, contact every resident so we would not have this problem. The only resident that I met with was Jody Carroll. So, it wasn't like we just said, we're just going to sneak this through. We, we looked up all the addresses and mailed to everybody that was going to be noticed in advance. So, it's, it's, you know, we have done, I, I don't know much more what I can do, you know. And, and so, that's the way that should have now, we'll gladly work with the residents and we'll try, you know, try hard to make everything. It, it seems that when a house covers 13% of the property and where the neighbor's house is probably covered more like 50% of the property, that we have this large property that if it was subsidized like the other houses, you'd have three other houses here. And so, it, it's a little bit like the neighbor saying, now, we want you to have the same size house we have, even though your lot's six times the size. So, but anyhow, I think going back to, may, I could compact the house and so it has a, a smaller footprint and make it two stories, but I think the neighbors are not going to be thrilled. I mean, it will be like the neighbors, two stories, but that's going to be a lot more view blocked, a lot more, less privacy. And so, I, I, I don't want to be locked into a corner by the-
Okay. Staff, did you?
We do. We want to make sure that we're not getting any deeper into a too late dialogue that, we're getting a little bit farther along into re-presenting the project. So, applicant was seeking some clarification. Staff believes that we've interpreted your input and that you were very clear, that you would like to explore some of the options that were suggested, either in the staff report or through the public comment, possibly making the structure into two pieces, or maybe there's a way that moving the garage could shorten the, the wall line. And we did not hear you direct to change a spread-out, the spread-out house into a completely stacked structure either. And that, I don't think anybody objected to that tiering of, of different heights. And that seemed like something that was desirable and frankly, interesting in, in terms of the plan. We're comfortable to work with the applicant and his architect. And if, if I got that wrong, please let me know. But I think we should, we should let you conclude this item.
I think, I think that sounds, that sounds fair. And if there's any other comments at this point, I would entertain a motion to continue.
A motion to continue?
Continue to a date uncertain.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
And I'll second.
In all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So, that concludes that item. And I need to locate my agenda, so I don't even know what we're on. Okay. So, that does move us into the director's report.
All right. Very briefly, your agenda forecast, you are, we continue to have plenty of projects coming your way. On April 23rd, we are noticed for two downtown projects. There's a proposal at 700 Main Street that involves residential structure with a parking exception, and it's with existing development. And then, there's a proposal for a new mixed-use project at 631 Mill Street. On May 14th, we're going to bring the capital improvement program for the Planning Commission's annual finding of general plan consistency. We anticipate you'll have other business items on May 14th. Other things that are in the works include 623 Church Street, which is a, just a very simple downtown project. Bike Works is getting ready to come back to you. Of course, now, 2800 Champs-Elysees, we are going to start figuring out how to work that into your agenda in the future. Staff is also working diligently on the land use plan, the remaining pieces that you don't have yet. And so, as soon as we're ready to bring those to you, we'll, we'll give you a fair warning on that. But we need, we need some more time, and we appreciate the break that you've, you've tolerated for us. So, thank you. Community Development Director decisions on April 15th, we'll have an addition at 405 St. Joseph that will be in consideration. It's been noticed. And then, tomorrow, we have two accessory dwelling units, one at 307 Magnolia, the other at 401 Beach. Both conform, and so, pursuant to our new ordinance, those will be approved tomorrow. I'm prepared to do that. City Council, as I, I think I mentioned at your last meeting, directed staff to proceed with formation of an architectural advisory committee. I'm trying to pull that together. We have a draft bylaws, draft ordinance, and staff report, and everything else for council, and realizing that we probably need to bring it through you as well because we see that we have some zoning code changes. So, keep you posted. It's kind of a complex piece, the way design touches the municipal code in all kinds of different ways. So, it's, it was a little bit bigger nut to crack than I expected. I, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting feedback from the attorneys on that. So, I, I did my bit, and we'll, we'll let you know how that's going. We're excited about that. Yes.
So, I'm sorry, just to ask a question on that. So, for some of these items that, say perhaps item that we just heard, would the timing work out to allow some of that?
I don't know. These are pretty far ahead of having actually an ordinance adopted and recruitment, et cetera. This project is one that I would have used discretion to bring it to the architectural advisory committee, absolutely, this, this particular project. And there's a number of things like that, that we'll, we'll calibrate ourselves together in terms of which projects are appropriate for them. We were not wanting this architectural advisory committee to be design review for single-family unless it was really necessary and important. But otherwise, it was really more for multifamily, mixed-use, and non-residential projects.
Thank you.
I'm reminding you all that on April 30th, there is that Planning Commission training in the library in San Mateo. I think two of you are signed up for that, maybe three. If you're interested, let me know. And then, one last plug for the Poplar Gateways workshop on Thurs, or excuse me, Wednesday, Wednesday, April 24th, hosted by the Parks and Recreation Commission. They'll be looking at alternatives for approaching that area. And we're really excited about making progress on that.
Has staff heard much from the public on the orange safety fencing that's been-
We are hearing. And we're glad that we're hearing about it because it's really important for people to understand why it's there and what, what the options are and what, what it's trying to protect from, in terms of both public safety, as well as the preservation of, of the bluff edge to the extent feasible.
I'll just say, what I've heard from, from my neighborhood and my community is people understand, they get it, they've seen it, they've seen it going and sloughing off and really thought, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, that's the same feedback I've heard as well. And, and actually, some of the, I think I, I talked with you about some of the other, if there are other areas where, you know, safety. And I actually checked in with some folks about their perspective on whether the fencing would be of safety, help with safety further north towards Kelly. And they also felt like that area, there's an area where there's a lot of dips and valleys that folks tend to not see, and can be pretty treacherous as well. So, definitely hearing that they get what it's about. So.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, with that, that brings us to Planning Commission Communications. Anything to report on our side?
Just chime in on that light, last item. Like, I have talked to two or three folks who are upset about the orange safety fencing. I try to use it as an opportunity for education. You know, it's a, potentially a pretty powerful story that the, you know, soon-to-be-famous California Coastal Trail, there's a stretch of it that isn't very old, that's already threatened to fall into the sea. I don't, how old is it? 20 years, maybe? That, yeah, that's pretty dramatic. So, I think, I think it's good that people have their eyes open to what's happening out there by, by virtue of the safety fencing.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move you adjourn.
I'll second.
All favor, aye.
Aye.